Good afternoon, everyone. This meeting is being recorded per Governor Lamont's executive order 7B.
All right. Thank you, Charles. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 2021 meeting of the Weathersfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, just to give a quick rundown of what we have, we have three applications to hear. And for each application, we will go through first the public hearing, which is where we will first hear the staff report that has been put together regarding the application. We will speak to the applicants. The commissioners will have a chance to ask questions after the applicant has presented additional information about the application. And we'll have an opportunity for anyone who is joining the call who wishes to speak in any capacity regarding any of the applications. Once we've gone through that for all three, we'll move into our public meeting. And the key point to note there is, once we move into the public meeting, that is the commissioner's discussion. There's not additional testimony we take at that point. So, once we've moved into the public meeting, or really at any point, if you're not actively speaking, if you're able to mute your line just to reduce background noise, that'll be really helpful. After we do that, we have minutes from our March meeting that we may potentially be able to review and approve, and then we'll open it up for any business not otherwise on the agenda related to the zoning board of appeals. And one thing for the applicants, it looks like we have at least two of them present. To note, we typically have a full slate of five commissioners present, in which case you would need four affirmative votes, or four to one, your variance would be granted, three to two, it would not. In this case tonight, we have four commissioners present, so you would need all four affirmative votes for the variance to be granted. So with that, we want to offer the opportunity, if you so choose, to, you have the opportunity to delay with no additional cost on next month's meeting if you wanted to come back at a time when we had five commissioners present. Just want to make you aware of that. If that's something you want to take advantage of, please let us know after we read your application in. And with that, Elizabeth, would you like to read applications, or you want me to take that tonight?
I can certainly do that.
All right, application number one.
Application number one, number 624421, variance from section 3.7 dimensional requirements to allow side yard of 1.5 feet as against 5 feet minimum required to facilitate the installation of a standby generator to the western side of the building to allow aggregate side yard of 12.5 feet as against 15 feet required, combined with existing 11 feet on eastern side, residential zone B, location 29 Dix Road, applicant Christopher Fraley.
All right, it looks like we have Mr. Fraley with us. Charles, we'll start, if you would please, with the review of the staff report.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, we, the applicant is considering installation of a standby generator to the western side of his residential building, as illustrated on accompanying plot plan. The building is currently setback at 5 feet from the property boundary on the western side, while on the eastern side, there's 11 feet setback, excuse me, making it a total of 16 feet, which would meet the required aggregate setback of 15 feet. So with the proposed installation of a generator which has a width of 2 feet and is located 1 foot 6 inches from the building, it will then be only a foot 6 inches from the property line. And since the regulations require also an aggregate setback of 15 feet from both sides together, that requirement also falls short of 4 feet 6 inches. So there we have 11 feet at the eastern side, and then at the western side, no, we would end up with a foot and a half, making it 12 and a half. So then the variance is twofold. It's asking for a variance of 1.5 feet as against 5 feet minimum required, then it's asking you for for a variance to allow that would be 4 feet 6 inches short of the required aggregate setback. So staff has reviewed the proposed application and has realized that with the western side having only required setback, and the eastern side combined has only 1 foot above the required aggregate, as shown on the plot plan included in the application package for work plans. So if the generator was to be installed on the eastern side of the building, while achieving the minimum side yard requirement, aggregate side yard would still be deficient. So the applicant is requesting a variance based on the hardship that, one, the front of the house has several windows, and if the required setback from the windows was to be realized, then the front yard setback would also be compromised. And number two is that the driveway is located to the eastern side of the house. And number three, the rear of the house has windows, there's a hatchway, air conditioning condenser unit, all of which would impede the placement of the generator within close proximity to the building, to any of the attachments and everything that goes with it. And staff has no objection to the granting of this variance. There has been, the sign has been posted within the statutory time, the notices have been sent out. There have not been any opposition from any of the neighbors.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Mr. Fraley, good evening. If you would, just for the, the meeting recording, if you would just state your name and address, and then tell us a little bit more about the application.
My name is Chris Fraley, and my address is 29 Dix Road here in Weathersfield. And as Charles, you know, just discussed, the, the situation is might, there's a, there's a driveway on the complete west side of the house, so I don't have any option there. And the back of the house has a hatchway, several windows, and an air conditioning unit. And, and I actually didn't know the rules. I thought I was going to put it right next to the air conditioning unit and would look quite nice there, but it's not, you know, not allowed. So I'm left with the spot on the side of my house, the west side, which is perfect, other than the fact that it's a tight lot and, you know, I don't have that 5 feet, that's, that's necessary. But talk to my neighbor, there's really just one neighbor right next door who, you know, if it was reverse situation, I would have appreciated the same thing. I really explained to him what was going on. And he's, they're very nice people, and they're like, no, that's no problem at all. And, you know, it, it will fit very nicely there, but it, it just requires a variance because of the lack of footage that I have.
Okay, and thank you. I have a couple of questions to start, and then we'll open it up to other commissioners. So the neighbor you mentioned, that's the neighbor on the west side?
Yep.
That would be most affected. How far back from the line is their house? Like, are you, is there still some space on their side from where the generator will be, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's 10 feet, actually.
Okay. And then from looking at your house from Dix Road, is, what's the visibility like of the generator placement? Is there anything that obstructs the view at all, or is it straight sightline?
Well, actually, we put in, just last fall, we put in a, a rounded stone wall. And so where this is going to sit is actually block, you know, if you were directly looking from the road at my house, it will be blocked by that little bit of stone wall. So, you know, one of the things, I, I'm very, I love this town, and I love how people take care of their properties and, and really above and beyond a lot of other towns in the area. And so I'm, I'm very conscious of that. And the way this will sit, it's really just a perfect spot. You know, I don't think it, anyone will hardly even notice it, let alone be, you know, have a difficulty with it aesthetically.
Okay, and dimensions again, just to make sure I'm reading right, the, the unit itself is 4 feet wide by 2 feet deep?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let me go, just, I'll go around as you're appearing on my screen. Liz, did you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions, but I am your neighbor down the street on Dix Road, and, you know, I saw the sign and everything, so, and I'm familiar with the property, so, you know, thanks for being here tonight.
All right, thank you. Dan, any questions for this applicant?
No questions for me. Thank you.
All right, Paul, how about you?
Sorry, no questions for me.
Okay.
The applicant, they do diligence.
All right, Mr. Fraley, anything else that you haven't covered that we should know about the application?
Nope, I think that between Charles' report and my comments, that covers it.
Okay, great, thank you. Liz, then we will move on to second application.
All right. Application, two, application number 624521, variance from section 3.7 dimensional requirements to allow side yard of 4.5 feet existing on northern side as against 5 feet minimum required to allow aggregate side yard of 11 as against 15 feet required, 4.5 feet existing combined with 6.5 feet at generator to facilitate installation, installation of AC compressor at the southern side of the building, residential zone B, location 251 Garden Street, applicant Thaddeus and Mary Socora.
All right, thank you, Charles. Would you share the staff report on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant is seeking to install a standby generator to the southern side of the building. The generator would be located 6.5 feet from the property line. And over on the northern side, there is currently 4.5 feet, which is a legally non-conforming side yard as against 5 feet required. So that makes the aggregate side yard, the aggregate side yard will be 15 feet required. So the aggregate side yard would be now 11 feet as against 15 feet. So basically, the applicant initially had request, was requesting a variance for 6 feet on this side of the property. And because the, because the variance that he's getting, he's not really getting a side yard variance, so to speak, because 4.5 feet that exists over and over on the northern side is already legally non-conforming. So what he's going for is a aggregate side yard reduction from 15 feet to 11 feet. That's a combination of that existing 4.5 plus the 6.5 feet. So since we are going to be looking, since the applicant is going to be looking for a variance for aggregate side yard, it stands to reason that he also applies for a variance of to, to regularize this existing non-conformity, so to speak, because what, what we will have is a, is a, if the variance is granted, what we will have is a conforming aggregate situation, and you, we would have the, the, the the variance granted and then still have the non-conforming situation. So we brought this, this in as a twofold application. So one first, variances for the side yard reduction from 5 feet to 4.541 yard, and then for the aggregate to be reduced to 11 feet as against 15 feet required. The applicant has stated his hardship as having an existing deck in the rear of the building and sidewalks to the front, giving him no alternative but to locate the, the the unit to this, this southern side of the building. So basically, the applicant is requesting a variance for the southern side, which, which is, like I said before, he's reducing the aggregate from 15 to 11 feet. And as I said, the northern side is already 4.5 feet. So the situation would be one which would regularize that existing non-conformity. And staff, again, has no concerns. I would recommend approval for this variance to be granted. So far, we have not had any feedback from the neighbors, no, no neighbor expressed any kind of opposition to this variance being granted here on this southern side. However, I would like to point out to the board that there's a neighbor to the northern side that somehow misconstrued the variance application. And her exact words to me were, were that the applicant has, has already taken some of her land, and there's no requesting more of her land. And I hasten to, to, you know, explain to her that this is not the situation where the applicant is requesting any, any, any land, and we, we here don't, we don't have that authority to grant persons any kind of authority to, to get, to encroach on anyone's land, so to speak. And I explained to her that the northern side of the building, it's already 4.5 feet from this plot plan, this survey that we have here. And the side would not be affected by the installation of this unit here. So she was not really satisfied with my answer. She, she thought that there was some kind of encouragement going on. And I told her that if there was any encouragement, she would have to take that with the with the applicant. And it is clear from the plot plan that there's no form of encouragement going on as far as we know. So that's the situation. So she has visited the town hall offices and went to the town manager's office and myself and the, another one of the building inspectors spoke with her, and we explained exactly what, what was happening. She kind of accepted it reluctantly. So I, I asked her if she wanted to speak at the in the public hearing tonight, and she said that she would very much like to bring her concerns to the, to the public hearing. So I have her telephone number, so I can let, when it comes around to the public speaking section, I can let her voice be heard.
Okay, thank you, Charles. One clarifying question, this is an air conditioner unit or a generator on this one?
This is a generator, actually.
This is a, okay, I think the paperwork referenced air conditioner, condenser unit in the packet that we have. But maybe more to the point, are, are the applicants present for the meeting?
As a matter of fact, let me, I rather misinformed you, Mr. Chairman. It's a, it's an air conditioning compressor unit, not a generator this time.
And have you heard from the app? I don't see, I think I've got everybody in view on my screen. I don't see that we have the applicant present.
I think I saw him earlier on. I know applicant is not here, but let me let me see if I can applicant and
All right. And Charles, while you're doing that, I'm gonna go back to a step that I missed, just for the record, with the first application. Do we have anybody on the line who wish to speak on behalf of the first application, either in favor or in opposition? And that's not seeing anyone, I do not, we will.
Hello, Mr. Socora?
Hi.
Hi, I noticed that you have not been able to log on to. Okay, something went wrong. But anyways, we will try and see how much we can accommodate you by a telephone. So you're now coming out of my cellphone speaker, and the commissioners will hopefully hear you. So over to you then, Mr. Chairman.
All right, good evening, Mr. Socor. Can you hear me? Okay, this is David Gustafson.
Yes, I can hear you. My wife's married, you're here with me.
All right. Hi, good morning, or good evening, I should say, sorry, getting ahead of myself. If you would, just for the record, if you both could just give us your name and address for our transcript.
And Mary Socora, 251 Garden Street, Weathersfield, Connecticut, 06109.
All right, thank you. And we just heard before he dialed you, Charles gave us his staff report on your application. So we're into the public hearing portion, and we'd like to give you first, well, first, since I believe you were not with us earlier, we have four commissioners present tonight. The rules of the zoning board of appeals require that there are four affirmative votes for variance to be granted. Typically, we have five voting members, but we are short one tonight. So with that, you have the opportunity to, if you choose to delay without penalty and have your application heard at our next meeting. So just want to make sure you're aware of that opportunity. If you wish to do that, or you want to keep moving forward this evening?
Well, I like to move forward.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So what I'd like to do is give you first the opportunity to just walk us through high-level summary of the application, and then we'll have an opportunity for the commissioners to ask you some questions.
Sure. Basically, what it is, we want to put in a central air conditioner. And the condenser unit would be go out to the side of the house, but because we only have a total of 15 feet, including a 4 and 1/2 on one side, 10 and 1/2 on the other side, for a total of 15 feet. And the, the condenser unit will take off, will take, take about 4, 4 feet. So that would leave us with like 11 feet or so. And so that's, that doesn't meet the 15 feet requirement. So that's why we're asking for those variants.
Okay, a couple of questions, if I remember correctly, this is the sou- southern side of the house?
Uh, yes.
Okay, the neighbor who's most directly impacted, so that you share a side yard with on the southern side, have you had conversations with that neighbor about the application?
Yes, I did. I talked to her. Um, the neighbor is not there. She's deceased. The daughter owns the house. She lives in Georgia. I texted her, and she said she received a letter. She has no problem with it. Her only comment was, why did we wait so long to put in central air?
Fair enough. From, from living in Georgia, as I did for a couple of years, I can understand that sentiment if she's down there now. The, so that, that property, and, and I don't expect you have the exact measurements. Do you, can you give us a sense of just how far then from the side their house actually is?
Total from my house to their house?
Or from, from the line to their house? I'm just thinking, how, how close are we putting this unit?
Probably the same. It's probably about 4 feet.
Okay.
We're close over here.
Got it, got it. And just from, as you look at the house from Garden Street and on the south side where the unit would be placed, is it is there anything that obstructs the view of the condenser, or is it visible from the road potentially?
We have a beautiful porcupine bush that would obstruct the view.
Okay.
Obstruct the view from the street.
Yeah, right.
Would hide the condenser.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna move around the horn then to the other commissioners, as I see you on screen this time. Dan, first, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, any questions from you?
No questions for me.
All right, Elizabeth. All right, and we have the information. We've got diagrams, which are appreciated. Mr. and Mrs. Socor, anything else that we haven't covered that you want to share with us about the application?
We're good.
We're good.
Okay.
Pretty clear cut.
Appreciate your help and time.
All right, thank you. And I don't see that we have anybody else on the line, Charles, but you did mention that there was some potential feedback with this application.
Um, that's correct. So let me hang up this call from the Socoras, and then I will get back to you if necessary. So
Okay, yeah, you'll reconnect with them then when we get to the public meeting?
Yeah, so Mavis Murphy.
So, Charles, just a question, since we're having connectivity issues, do you want to give the Socoras any information about the feedback that we're about to hear, or did you connect, did you disconnect them already, or are they still on?
I disconnected them already.
Oh, okay, all right. Are they aware of this? I'm just
They are aware, they are aware of the concern from the neighbor. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I've just seen it typically, if we were all together in the room, obviously, they'd be able to hear the feedback directly.
Hello, good afternoon, Ms. Murphy. My name is Charles Morrison. I'm zoning enforcement officer from the town of Weathersfield, and we have a conversation a couple of days ago. We are in the, we are in the zoning board of appeals, public hearing today, as I told you we would. And the applicant, the application for the variance is now being heard. So there's the public session where you, you may speak, you know, may express you may express your content. Since I have you, I did give you the calling information, and I didn't hear from you, but since I have you on the line, you're, I'm actually talking to you through my cellphone. I can put you on speakerphone, and the board can hear your concern. Would you like to voice in it? Okay, so I'll put you on momentarily. Okay. You're on.
Okay, hello, Mavis Murphy here.
Hi, Ms. Murphy, David Gustafson. Thank you for joining us. We understand you had some feedback with regard to an application we just heard. So, yeah, sorry, we understand you have some feedback for an application we just heard for 251 Garden Street. So if you would, just for the record, give us your name and address, and then please share your feedback on that application.
Okay, do you want my name? Is that what you want? I didn't hear you.
Yes, please. I'm sorry. Yeah, if you could just give us your name and address, and then
Okay. My name is Mavis K. Murphy, 261 Garden Street, Weathersfield, Connecticut.
Okay, and can you share with us the feedback that you wanted to provide related to the application we have for 251 Garden Street?
Yes, I'm not in agreement, as there is a discrepancy in the distance of, to the boundary on the south side, I mean, the north side, which is my property.
Okay, discrepancy on the boundary. So the, the application that's in front of us is for a, an air conditioner unit on the south side, so the opposite side from you?
I, I live on the opposite side. I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a discrepancy. I don't have an issue with number two. The issue is variance number one, the amount I don't have an issue with number two. The issue is variance number one, the amount of side yard of 4.5 feet. I am, I'm not in agreement and there's a discrepancy in the distance to the boundary.
Okay, so.
On the north side towards 261 Garden Street.
Okay, so what we've heard is that their, their existing side yard is four and a half feet on that northern side. You're saying it's not really four and a half feet?
No, it's not. It's three and a half feet. And there is a, a survey that was done in nine, it was, my survey was done, let's see, I have it right here, at 514, 2016. There was an encroachment on, they encroach on my property. And so, so that is why I am saying there's a discrepancy. So I'm not in agreement. Because they don't have four and a half feet.
Okay, Charles, can you shed any light from the staff perspective as to the discrepancy? I believe in your report, you indicated it was four and a half feet.
Certainly. On the plot plan submitted that we got from our street file, this was done by Russell J. Carlo, registered land surveyor, number 8156. And this, this is showing a 4.5 foot setback from the property line on the northern side.
And it says four and a half feet plus or minus because they had an existing sidewalk there. And this, this survey was made on December 14, 1986. My survey was completed on, when it just said April 26, 2016. So there's a discrepancy right there.
So, Charles, is the town aware of the 2016 survey that she's referencing?
No, to the best of my recollection, we have nothing on file that shows that.
Oh, the permit is, yes, my, my survey is on file.
Oh.
It was filed, it was filed and, and I told you that, Charles, and you said that it wasn't necessary to look at my survey or the property line. It was, it was, I have the property survey certificate. It was filed on, let's see, map 2940 and 92619 at 8:26 a.m.
All right, Ms. Murphy, can I ask you a question? When you reference encroachment, is there a structure that is encroaching into that space? Or you just think?
There's a driveway, I'm, I'm sorry, it goes, it's, it's a matter of like six inches and then goes all the way down to the back. And there's some of his trees around it. And so, I mean, I don't have any problem him putting in a, a air conditioner on the other side. It can't be put on my side, on the, the north side of his house because he has, he has a, I guess, you know, I haven't, they haven't spoken to me about it. So I have no idea what their situation is truly, but all I know is that there's, I, I'm not in agreement. And if I have Attorney Sean Clark, if anybody would like to speak with him, they can call him for further information.
So is there a, yeah, go ahead, Elizabeth.
No, so this is, the issue here is, this is a, a.
I can't hear you.
The, the issue here is that this is a existing legally non-conforming side yard, right? Whether it's four and a half feet or three and a half feet, it's existing legally non-conforming side yard, correct?
Is that more for?
That's for Charles, yes.
This is, I've got my home phone, my cellphone wanted to be clearer. I don't, I don't know what you're saying in the, in the, the, I don't know what you're asking me.
Yeah, Ms. Murphy, actually, sorry, that question is more directed for Charles from the town perspective. So the, so Charles, to repeat the question, the existing, whether it's four and a half or three and a half, it's a legally non-conforming situation on that side of the house, right, on the northern side, Charles?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So unless, unless after the survey was done, there was some kind of addition or extension to the building that made it go closer to the property line, then that would be another matter. But if this is the survey that was done, then the original basis here on this plot plan and we have four and a half feet, then, I mean, I don't see how that became less than 4.5 feet without an extension. So.
It's free.
What we could do is get the, we could get her information here from her survey and see what they actually have. And I will double check with the town's files to see if we, to see what really constitutes that reduction from 4.5. Because there must be something that would have contributed to that reduction from 4.5 to what it is now, three, she's saying? She's saying that's.
Saying three.
Yeah, so.
You're, you're, Ms. Murphy, you're estimating three and a half is the, is the distance from your perspective?
Well, yes, it's, it's really three and a half and he's saying four and a half. And he and I had a conversation about that. And they said, oh, well, because they put that there because they had an existing sidewalk on there. And because of the zoning laws and whatever, and so they agreed that it was correct. But they, there's, but when they put their application in, Charles gave me a copy of this old plan here. And it, you know, from 1986. So, you know, I had my property survey only because I have a, I had a new puppy and I wanted to put a fence in. In order to put the fence in, I needed to have my property surveys, plus I knew that there, I, I knew anyway. So I needed to have it, I needed to have, you know, a legitimate survey that was certified for my property. And I told them about that. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with them putting their air conditioner on the other side. It doesn't really affect me. What affects me is to say that they have more property on my side, which they don't. So I, I'm, so anyway, I don't know what you guys do about that. I've never been involved with something like this. So it's, that's my, that's my thing. That is why I'm not in agreement.
Okay, Ms. Murphy, can I ask, if you can hear me, I have two questions and I want to see if any of the other commissioners have questions for you. If their application had been submitted and reflected three and a half feet on that side, would you have had an issue with that application? Or is there some? What's that?
Their application is saying minimum side yard, they told us minimum side yard, four and a half feet against five feet. They have, and I don't know the word, it's just that they're, so they need a minimum of a half feet? But, you know, my, I don't know, the, the survey says that it was three and a half feet. So, um.
Okay.
You know, when it goes down to the property, because they put down, you know, in more on the property. So, you know, I'm not an engineer. I have the paperwork. So bottom line is, if, if this is an agreement, do they now own that property? What, what is, I'm not up to.
Yeah, so, well, here, here's my, my last question for you and then, like I said, I'll open it up to others. You referenced having an attorney for this. Is, is there some legal remedy that you are seeking from them for that side of the house?
No, I'm not seeking a legal, I know, I don't know what you mean by that, but.
Well, I mean, are you, I mean, are you?
I'm just letting you know, letting you people know that that's not correct. That's all.
Okay.
I'm not looking, I'm looking for, I don't know what he's looking for. He never came to me.
Yeah, well, they're, they're looking for the, the air conditioner unit on the other side of the house and to do.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. They can do that. Doesn't affect me.
Okay.
Why did they ask for more on my side? But why do they ask for another, you know, why would they need that?
Yeah, and, and they don't for this. And so I don't know if that's maybe where there's been some, maybe they were, created some confusion. They're, they're not asking for additional on your side of the house. Now, if the, you know, if the distance they put on the application is in dispute, that may not be for our board to resolve. But they're not asking for any change on your side of their house. The reason.
I want to sell my house and there's going to be this thing, you know, it's just like, I don't want to complicate my life to give them six feet, six inches of my property. It's not, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand your concern. I just want to make sure we're clear that their, their application, the, the reason your side of the, that the northern side of the house, which you share that side yard with them, the reason that comes into play is because of the total aggregate side yard requirements for their property. But there's nothing in the application that changes anything about your side of their house.
Okay, the only thing is, is there's a discrepancy. They're saying that it's more than it's less. So, and, and so then I don't know if I have to deal with that. A separate issue, write a letter and have your, your people look into that. I'm not quite sure what I have to do. My, my attorney was going to, you know, he was going to represent me. Can I, and it's not necessarily, I can represent myself if it's not as big as I, it's not, six inches is not a big deal. It's not about that. It's about the neighborly thing to do that wasn't done. And bottom line is, you know, there's an encroachment and it's like, you know, I didn't say, you ever have to move this, you have to move that. It's six inches. And bottom line, if they're trying to carry, get that back, anyway, it's, 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 I don't really want to address that now. It's something else. But the bottom line is, he's saying he has four and a half. He doesn't have four and a half, he's got three and a half. So, you know, there's a discrepancy there. That's all I, that's all I can talk about. That's all I know. And in the distance, you know, the, you know, the, the discrepancy in the distance to the boundary. So if that, you know, I have to speak for myself and bottom line is, you know, hopefully it doesn't stop their air conditioning from going on. It shouldn't because it's going on the other side. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I definitely appreciate your feedback. And I want to take a minute just to make sure we give other commissioners opportunity to ask questions. So just, Dan, quickly, did you have any questions for Ms. Murphy?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, any questions?
No questions for me.
All right, and Elizabeth, anything else? Okay, all right. So, Ms. Murphy, I think you've done a, we thank you. You've done a nice job of explaining your position and, and what the issue is from your perspective. Is there any, is there anything else you'd like to share with us that we haven't covered?
No, no, I just want like your name. I don't know your name.
Oh, I'm, I'm, my name's David. I'm David Gustafson.
Oh, David Gustafson?
Yes.
G T F, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
I have the record, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks for joining us.
Notice about this?
Um, yeah, Charles can, Charles will be the.
The notice will be published in the newspaper, but, um.
Well, since I'm affected by it, don't you think I should get something?
The, the, the state statutes require that we, we publish the result of this meeting. So whether, whatever happens, whether the variance is granted or not, it will be published in the newspaper. You will not get a notification directly. The only person that will get the notification directly is the applicant. But it will be, it will be published in the newspaper that the variance was granted. If it, if the variance is granted, it will be published that the variance is granted as, as, as applied, yeah.
And, and Charles, just.
There's a discrepancy.
Yeah, so, Charles, can maybe you just provide and clarify what her best contact would be for questions after our meeting tonight?
Okay, okay, I get it. Okay, that's fine. Now I can put this to rest for today.
All right, thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, Charles, did we have any other feedback on this application?
No, and.
All right, and we have no one else who's joined us, joined the call, it doesn't look like.
I, I mean, if. So if the board go ahead and grants this variance, it really would not affect the, the unit.
Yeah.
Is a discrepancy and it's not an encroachment per se. She just has a, she thinks she has a discrepancy regarding the side yard setback.
Okay, we, why don't we pick up more when we get to the public meeting discussion? If we could read the third application, please?
Number three, application number 624621, variance from section 3.6A1. Accessory building structures to allow accessory building in the side yard residential zone A. Location 210 Broad Street. Applicant JPCL Associates LLC, care of Peter Liam Bruny.
All right, Charles, do you have a staff report for this one you can share?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. So the applicant is seeking to construct an accessory building, which is a garage in the side yard. As a matter of fact, it would be pretty much on the line straddling the side yard and the rear yard. Staff has reviewed the proposed request for variance and has found that the, according to map submitted by the applicant, the 100-year flood boundary encompasses the entire rear and side yards. In actual fact, the property, for the most part, is sitting in the 100-year flood area. Also, the wetlands take up approximately 50% of the rear yard. Based on this, the applicant is requesting a variance to permit the location of the garage within the side yard. And the applicant has stated his hardship as regular lot configuration, not conducive to the placement of a detached garage and two water funding and drainage issues on the property. The applicant was informed that because of the proposed location of the garage, a wetland permit would have to be obtained before the building permit can be issued. So I, we had discussion with the, the town engineer. He was at the counter at the time of Mr., Mr. Liam Bruny's visit. And he kind of explained to Mr. Liam Bruny what the requirements was as it relates to the flood plain and the wetlands. And there would have to be some kind of construction with the garage in order to, for it to meet the requirements of the engineering department. That would be submitted to the wetlands board and they would review that. And for the, for the building application, there is a flood plan that was submitted and it should be in your pocket showing the existing house. And where the proposed garage would be located. It's, and the lots in these areas are, it's configured, it's configured so, so in such a way that pretty much any side of the yard, the house could be the rear yard. As a matter of fact, the, the corner of the, of the house, the, the, the northern corner of the house is pointing to like the middle of the rear yard delineation of that part to put rear yard and 10-foot side yard on one side and 13-foot side yard. So if you look at the, the, your proposed garage, you'll see where it lies. Section of it is in the rear yard, as I said, and the section is in the side there. Staff has no issue with the, with this application and would recommend. with this application and would uh recommend approval uh subject to the uh wetlands review being granted and um that's pretty much what I have.
All right, thank you, Charles. And it looks like we have the applicant with us. Uh sir, if you would, please just uh give us your full name, make sure we are um in fact, pronouncing it correctly and your address for the record. And then uh tell us what uh what else you'd like us to know about the application.
Please unmute yourself, Mr. Liam Bruny. I can't seem to unmute. Okay, let me. If you can hear me, Mr. Liam Bruny, can you?
Hello, Mary. I I can, I can hear. This is Mark Lembruni, Peter's son.
Okay.
Let me see. Just going to reach out to him, see if he has any technical difficulties and just stand by for one moment. Sorry for the inconvenience. Uh hello, yes, so um they're having trouble rejoining the Zoom meeting, so I'm just going to give them the information to call in. Um if you need to move forward, that's fine. Otherwise, if you could wait another thirty seconds, they should be on it.
Okay, that we can um, we can wait for them to rejoin. Um, just looking at the diagrams, this certainly, I think, wins tonight's prize for most unusual lot. Did I count seven sides to this? Configuration?
Yeah, it looks like it. Just give me one moment. I'm talking with them now.
Okay.
Okay, um have them on another phone here on speaker and uh I'm going to try to have them talk uh to you right now. Just one moment.
Okay.
Okay, you should be able to hear them now. Can you hear each other?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Lembruni. Can you hear me?
I think you both talked at the same time, but.
All right, go go ahead, please. If you would just, uh we we heard Charles's report on your application and uh what we'd ask now is if you can just uh please, for the record, state your name and address and then walk us through what you'd like us to know about the application.
Okay, uh this is Peter and Janet Liam Bruny. Uh, we own that property through uh an LLC that uh we also are part of. The LLC, the actual owner of the property is J P C L, so the application is through J P C L. Uh this property was uh right next door to us. We cut off part of our property about fourteen years ago and put in a house. Uh and at that time, uh for a couple of reasons, we never built the garage. Uh one of the reasons was that that area was always wet and we wanted to see what we could do with drainage over time. And we had put in a drainage system to try to alleviate some of the water problems, which sort of worked, but didn't work that great. Uh and that needs to be totally upgraded, uh number one. So one of the issues is we have to do some site work there to to kind of alleviate the water poisoning. And the way this lot is configured, as you can see, it's not a real lot, but it's kind of tucked back from the street quite a bit, behind the green and kind of dog legs uh behind our neighbor. Uh I'm not sure exactly the number there. I think he's two twenty. And anyways, the lot was challenging as it was in the beginning, compared to the five more, the front yard, the backyard, and the fact that it's a weird configuration. But we went with a recommendation at the time of uh the commission, you know, to set the sidelines and the back lines as we did. Uh where we want to place the garage is a fairly flat, dry area. It's the right place to put it. It's right next to the house. It will look like, you know, it's a case into the house, makes for easy entry of people in and out with groceries and so forth. And it's along, it it's just above the drainage area that that we want to build. We we we'll have to put some French drains from from the front of the house that goes between the garage and this uh house that they're now in eating to the back. Placing the garage in the back area is geometrically possible. You you can do it. You can fit it, but because of the water problems and the and the lay of the land there, and then it starts infringing on wetlands back there, uh I don't think it's the right thing to do. So we would like to put it on the side uh as shown in uh in the picture there.
Cause we want to configure the driveway.
Yeah, and you know, driveway will have to be reconfigured to make it work as well. Did did you hear what I said? Okay, I I don't know if this is working out.
No, I did. Yes, thank you. Um, heard you fine. It will, um, if you can hear us, okay, we're going to go through and uh see. I I've got a couple of questions to start and then we'll pass it to other commissioners. So if I'm reading the diagrams correctly, and thank you for the the context and the dog leg around two twenty, um, two twenty is the neighbor, that's the side uh and the portion of the yard that will be closest, the garage will be closest to two twenty. Is that right?
Yeah, his name is Raj. Uh I'll never pronounce his last name correctly, but.
Okay.
I do know, I do know Raj quite well. I spoke to him a number of times about this. As a matter of fact, today I went out with Raj and we measured uh how far his house is from the the side property, the sideline there. Uh so we want to put ours six feet from that sideline. His house is is kind of skewed. So one quarter is sixteen feet. The back corner of the house is sixteen feet from the sideline. Front corner of the house is forty feet. So, you know.
Okay.
At the closest point, it's going to be sixteen and six. It's going to be twenty two feet between the two houses. At the furthest point, it's going to be uh, you know, six and forty, forty six feet. So there's there's space in between. He's okay with it, you know, uh because it's quite a bit of distance there.
Okay, all right. You you read my uh second question, whether you had spoken with him. So I appreciate that context. Um, can you just give a sense of then the view from Broad Street? So where the uh structure will be placed? I assume it's going to be readily visible from Broad Street. Uh am I make, am I reading that part correctly?
Uh, actually not.
Okay.
The property has some, uh if if you're standing right at Broad Street looking straight on it, since the house is tucked in that dog leg and there's a bunch of trees there. We left all the trees naturally. We're going to keep the trees. You actually won't see the house behind the trees. In the winter and the fall, when there's no leaves, if you, if you look at an angle, not straight on from the street, but cutting a skewed angle, you 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 will be able to see the house in the garage next to it tucked in the dog leg.
Okay, all right. I'm going to um go around the horn to see uh, let me check in with the other commissioners. Elizabeth, any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions.
All right, Dan?
Just one question. Does this need to go in front of the historical society or historical committee?
Uh absolutely. Uh the house that uh is there is a salt box. I actually uh built it similar to one of the salt boxes that Tom Robbins would have in Orange County who liked uh sort of attached to the garage to it wouldn't look right anyway. So that's why we always intended on putting a detached garage for the salt box. And it will have the characteristics of like a carriage house, which which was similar to what was there in the old days, I'm sure, in many of these houses. So that's what we intended, but historic history will have to approve that design and give us the okay.
Okay.
If we have approvals from you, that's the next step, I would imagine.
Okay. Dan, did that cover what you needed?
Yep, and he answered my uh first question. Uh he's going to keep the trees there as well. So thank you.
All right, Paul, any questions for this applicant?
No, I answered all mine. I'm good.
Okay, um and Charles, just a clarifying question for you, if I can. Um, the structure itself, there's no um there's no variance that needs to be considered. The structure itself is fine. It's just strictly the placement that we're addressing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, Mr. and Mrs. Lembruni, anything else you want to share with us?
No, no, I appreciate you guys being patient. Uh for some reason, we tried every avenue to get in, you know, Zoom, uh Google and the phone. And in all three cases, we got a waiting mode that we're not able to get in. There was another commissioner, Sandy.
He's been trying to get on as well.
Yeah, we were both kind of fabulous in this ether space and we couldn't get in. So she's probably still trying to get in. Somebody should give her a call and let her know what happened.
Okay, thank you for that heads up. And now we appreciate everybody's patience. This is certainly uh, you know, I still, we've been doing this for many months, but it's still a work in progress. And I know we all look forward to being able to get back into the uh council chambers for a meeting at some point soon. Um, all right, Charles, did we have anyone else? Was there any feedback you had received related to this or anybody else who wished to provide feedback on this application?
I I tell you, Mr. Chairman, um, I think he's a neighbor. He lives in somewhere within that radius. I think he did get one of the letters or um but he had left me a voicemail to say that um he was requesting a copy of the application. And so I had um failed to to get to him before today, but luckily in the last minute, I realized that um I did not um grant his request by sending him the, so I asked him to send in the application, full packet of the application. And so um just to make sure, I asked if he wanted to speak um either for, you know, against if he had any comments for the comment section so that we could get him on here this evening. And then um he asked me, what about the winery? Where the winery was going? So um I told him that to the best of my recollection, this was not a winery, but a garage. At least I will order and find as long as it's not a winery. He said, as long as it's not a winery, then then I would, no, no, no problems. So I, yeah. I don't know if Mr. Lembruni had any um plans for today something with a winery, but he came up with that, so.
That's a different property. Yeah.
Ah.
The the vine, the vineyard is um is on our property. It's not part of this property. And it's about an acre of uh combines and it's it's a private thing that myself and Mark, who's on this phone, uh do for enjoyment. So if you ever got an old whiskey and want to taste our wine, feel free to stop in, guys.
All right, well, thank you. Um, so I just want to do one last check. Uh commissioners, any questions on, for any of the applicants? And you can, I can see all of you, so you can do a nod or shake of the head. Looks like everybody's declining. Um, any of the applicants before we close the public hearing and move into our public meeting, anything else that um we need to take into account? I'll give a few moments or a few seconds. Okay, not hearing anything. Um, thank you all to the applicants for uh walking us through your applications. At this point, I would like to ask one of the commissioners for a motion to close the public hearing and move to our public meeting.
Motion to close public hearing in most public meetings.
A second.
All right, thank you, Paul and Dan, all in favor of closing the public hearing. I.
I.
All right, all opposed. Okay, we have closed the public hearing. We'll move to public meeting. And just a reminder to the applicants, this is the point where the commissioners discuss and we will come to vote. All four of us um has have to vote in favor for the uh variance to be granted. And uh just to clarify, this is not a point where we take additional testimony. So please stay with us and join us. Um, and but we do not take additional input at this point. So with that, uh Elizabeth, if you would read us, so we can start the public meeting with regard to the first application.
Station number six two four two one, variance from section three point seven, dimensional requirements to allow side yard of one point five feet against five feet minimum required to facilitate the installation of standby generator to the western side of the building to uh to allow aggregate side yard of twelve point five feet as against fifteen feet required, combined with existing eleven feet on eastern side, residential zone B, location twenty nine Dix Road, applicant Christopher Fraley.
All right, commissioners, does anyone want to open up discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so look, I've got the motion from Elizabeth, second from Dan was the first I heard. Uh all in favor of approving the variance. I.
I.
All opposed. All right, the variance passes four to zero. Mr. Fraley, thank you for joining us tonight. Uh, you're welcome to stick around if you'd like to. We will move on now to the second application.
Application number six two four two one, variance from section three point seven, dimensional requirements to allow side yard of four point five feet existing on the northern side has against five feet minimum required to allow aggregate side yard of eleven feet as against fifteen feet required, four point five feet existing combined with six point five feet at generator to facilitate install installation of an A C compressor at the southern side of the building, residential zone B. Location two fifty one Garden Street, applicant Thaddeus and Mary uh Sakura.
And Charles, do we have them, did you want to get them back on the line so they can hear our discussion of their application?
Okay.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Sakura.
Speaking.
Charles Morrison here with the joining board of appeals back with you.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Morrison, this is David Gustafson. We just, I'm sorry, Mr. Sakura. It's been a, been a long night already. Um, we wanted to make sure we looped you back in and reconnected you so you could hear our discussion during the public meeting stage of um of our overall meeting tonight. And so just to clarify, we've heard the testimony previously, and this is the portion now where the commissioners discuss and and we will come to vote. So we don't take additional testimony, but we wanted to make sure you could be on the line to hear us as we go through discussing your application.
Sure.
Okay. Um, all right, so I'm going to start discussion here. Uh and Charles, I have a question just based on the the testimony we heard regarding actually the opposite side of the house and what that actual distance may be in terms of side yard. Um, that there wasn't any objection. That, there wasn't any objection to the the heart of the application, which is the variance needed for the air conditioner unit. And so my question, Charles, I don't know if we have an answer for this, but if we were to approve as submitted and then later there was something that came up, you know, independent of this variance that determined that the side yard information submitted was incorrect. What is the next course of action if that were to play out? So we approve as submitted, if it turns out that the side yard is different from what was approved, does it have to come back to us for an additional review and variance?
Uh, what would happen here is that that if it was approved as submitted, then for the records, it would have to be stated that it would have to be stated that there's a 4.5 feet side yard, you know, combining with with the southern side to make it 11 feet. So it seems to me that if that 4.5 was changed for any reason to even a lesser amount, then quite possibly it would have to go back to the board of appeals to ratify that situation to say that in it was actually, you know, 4 feet as against 4.5 or whatever the case may be. But the meat of the matter, like you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, is the is the placement of the condenser at that southern side, thus reducing the thus reducing the aggregate side yard. And my department does not, and the board of appeals does not usually get involved with trying to figure out property boundaries, you know, that's not really our, but it can become a civil matter, it can become a legal issue between both neighbors. And then we are pretty much caught in the middle, so to speak, and then we would have to, like I say, we would probably have to go back to the board of appeals, no doubt.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's helpful for me, just sticking through, I mean, it seems to me that we can, yeah, we can operate and work with the information as it's presented to us and can't speculate as to other items there. So your answer helped me with what I need. So any other questions or comments from other commissioners on this application? All right, I'm seeing shaking heads, so I will, yeah, go, Paul, so go ahead.
So Charles, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that currently the way this application is submitted, it's stating that there is 4.5 feet of side yard setback, however, we had the neighbor that's saying it's indeed 3.5. So if there was some form of discrepancy, let's say, for whatever reason, if the property was resurveyed and it was indeed 3.5, that the applicant would have to come back to us for a new variance, am I correct on that?
Yeah, I don't want to say he has to apply for variance again, but I'm thinking in the line, along the lines of simply ratifying it, making it, you know, going from 4.5 to whatever it is, just to to accommodate that 6.5 on the other side. So that we, just for the records, we will have, you know, there's something that has to be done, and I'm not I don't want to say I'm absolutely sure that there's, there have to be another application, but somehow it has to come before the board.
Okay.
So, but for us to if I may through you.
Please, Paul.
There is two, my hangups here are, is first of all, that part, whether or not the applicant would have to go back through the process and resubmit an application to me is where I'm, you know, that's a bit of, you know, swaying on that one. But even more so, more seriously, is the idea as to whether or not there was supposed to be some form of legal ramification as it relates to the neighbor? And how would the town be caught in this, how would the board be dragged into this? Because we approved or didn't approve an application that could be now used either some form of evidence to say, oh, yes, like as if we were put in a rubber stamp to that, to say that it was indeed 4.5. And so, I mean, that part there isn't too clear.
Yeah, I understand, I'm sorry, Paul, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I understand the hesitancy there, but I also and perhaps, you know, could be argued I'm splitting hairs on this one, but what we're being asked to memorialize is an allowance of that variance of four and a half feet and then the six and a half feet on the other side for the air conditioner unit for the total of 11. It seems beyond our ability to evaluate and assess and hypothesize as to whether something may yeah, may change in that amount and it needed to be something different. So what we're, I think, from my perspective, we have to evaluate the application as it's been submitted and the request and the variance that's needed is the four and a half and the six and a half for a total of 11. And if something comes up after the fact that indicates that those parameters are not being met, then, yeah, that's a we, I don't know that we're gonna define exactly what that next course would be if that were to happen. But I think what we have in front of us is fairly straightforward in terms of the dimensions as they're presented to us. So I don't know if anybody, Elizabeth or Dan, if you wanted to weigh in?
Yeah, I'm a little surprised that this doesn't happen or hasn't happened before. I mean, we grant a fair number of variances, all of them have the dimensions and, you know, measurements in them and property disputes, boundary disputes are not uncommon. I have to imagine there have been situations where there's a boundary dispute on a lot that had a variance for some reason or another. So I don't really know what happens to those situations. I'm a little reluctant, like the chairman said, to hold something up over the, over a hypothetical dispute that could happen, you know, down the road. She said she wasn't even, didn't even seem particularly interested in pursuing it, which I thought was interesting. So I, yeah, I'm kind of sort of with the chairman on this, but I'm a little, you know, I'm I'm a little surprised this hasn't come up before as to what you do with the variance when there is a boundary dispute. Does it have to, do you have to go back and correct it or revile it or anything like that?
Yeah, and I could only, I'm only speculating if I try to answer that, and I think that's part of our challenge.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and the important thing here is that the neighbor did not, she seemed to be in favor, she stated that she was in favor and she didn't object it and said that she was not in favor of it being granted. She was in favor of it. Her only concern, her only dispute is that it is an inch closer or something than than has been represented, that's all, that's all. And that would not affect the variance any at all, in my opinion. If it was found related to that, it was 3 feet, you know, kind of a, so.
Yeah, I just, I don't see anything in our entertaining the variance as it's submitted. I don't see anything in our approving it that limits or hinders Ms. Murphy from pursuing whatever she may want to pursue. And so that's kind of where I come down on it, but Paul, understanding your hesitations, but you know, to Charles' point, she was pretty clear that she wanted them to be able to go ahead and do the air conditioning portion of this. And, yeah, the other is a fact in dispute. But again, we're approving a variance for a set amount. If that dispute ends up leading to a change in where the line is and changes the side yard, then you know, again, I'm speculating, but that would seem to be a different variance that would be needed at that point. So, Dan, I wanted to make sure I gave you a chance to weigh in, did you have any comments or questions on this one?
No, I agree with your assessment as well.
All right, well, then, I'm, Paul, did you get all your comments in that you wanted?
I, I think so, I mean, based on everything, I guess if we're gonna go ahead with it, I would be okay with approving it the way it is.
Okay, well, then I will submit a motion that we approve the variance as submitted, which to clarify is a two-part submission. One is allowing the minimum side yard as stated in the application of four and a half feet on the northern side of the property against the 5 feet minimum requirement. And then second, allowing six and a half feet side yard on the southern side for placement of the AC compressor for a total approved variance of 11 feet of aggregate side yard. Yeah. I'll ask for a second. All right, I heard Elizabeth first on that one, so all in favor of the variance? I
I.
All opposed, all right, the variance is granted by a four to nothing vote. And to the Sakoras, we have one more application we're talking through, so you may feel free to stay on or go about your evening. Elizabeth, if you would read the third application?
Application number 624621, variance from section 3.6A1, accessory buildings and structures to allow accessory building in the side yard, residential zone A, location 210 Broad Street. Applicant JPL Associates LLC, Carob Peter Lambroune.
All right, well, I'll start discussion here. This is, as I said, this is definitely the winner tonight for the most oddly shaped lot that we've had to look at from a plot plan perspective. And placement seems to make sense. From everything I can see, the neighbor most immediately impacted has been consulted and we heard testimony that that neighbor is okay with things, view is, sounds like obstructed directly from Broad Street. And I think the only consideration is that, we, yeah, and this maybe goes without saying, but we may want to just stipulate that variance is approved pending then final approval by the historic district for the plans.
And for the redlands as well.
Yeah, good point, Charles.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance subject to approval by the historic district commission and the applicant obtaining a warrant.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? I all opposed. All right, the variance is granted by a four to nothing vote. With that, we will close out the public meeting and we have minutes, but I think we only have Charles, one commissioner who was present for the March meeting, so.
I think technically we could, but I don't know if one, one person in three extensions is a good look, so maybe we should hold off.
Yeah, I was, I'd like to move that we table approval of the March minutes until the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
I.
All opposed, okay, motion passed to move March minute approval to our next meeting. And with that, I believe our last order of business is to open it up for any comments on general matters of the zoning board of appeals. Charles, anybody out there in the lobby waiting to give comment on general matters of the zoning board of appeals?
Not that I can see here, no.
All right, any final comments from commissioners? All right, well, thank you all very much for your time, thank you, Charles, thank you to all the applicants who joined us. And we will adjourn our meeting for May 2021. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.